You're listening to 102.9 W F P R L P Franklin Public Radio.
Seventh area, the Joint Board of Appeals meeting will come forward. This meeting is being recorded and televised, obviously, as managed by all the reasons anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be held via the Zoom platform. In addition to being live, please log on. You may also join the meeting on your smartphone by calling 1-929-205-6099. For those looking to view the meeting, it can be viewed live at this time on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon 29. It is also streaming directly from Franklin TV's website. Visit Franklin.TV and just click on the Town Hall TV channel. Time being approximately 7:30.
All right, 7:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is for parcels 270, 28, 038, and 39, West Central Street and Panther Way. Applicant is seeking to conduct earth removal in excess of 1,000 cubic yards. The building permit is denied without a special permit from the Z B A.
We're in receipt of a letter from Brad Chapey from Camper Property Group. We would like to continue our meeting on 6/5. We're meeting with the planning board this Monday, so after the meeting, we'll let you know what the new Z B A date we're targeting. Just wanted to give you a heads up. We're going to, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to July 17th at 7:35 PM.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second. If he doesn't, if he can't make it then, which I understand because they changed their project around here. But anyway, with all that being said, I'll, vote comes on motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Time being approximately 7:35 PM. The next item on the agenda is 33 Elm Street, G. David Iverson Trustee. Applicant is seeking to construct a single-family home that has 123.92 feet of frontage where 200 feet is required, and with the right side yard setback of 26.5 feet where 40 feet is required. The building permit is denied without a variance from the Z B A.
We're in receipt of another letter from Ted Cannon, the attorney representing the applicant. May we please continue the Elm Street variance matter to the board's meeting on July 17th, 2025? We'll entertain a motion to continue until July 17th at 7:40 PM.
So moved.
And second. Motion made and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. We gotta wait five minutes. I'll do the minutes. We got the minutes from May 8. If anybody hasn't read them, I'll give you a minute to read them. If not, then I want to take a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, May 8, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Casey, anything else that come before the board? Okay. All right.
We've got two minutes.
Two-minute recess. To the chair.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. No, it's the chair. Thank you for coming, Judge. Bring us back pizza.
All right, here we go. 444 East Central Street, Tag Central LLC. Applicant is seeking a building permit to construct a 264-unit multifamily development. The building permit is denied without a comprehensive permit from the Z B A.
Just so everybody knows, Jamie apologized that he couldn't make it tonight. He had a family thing. He said he was going to come to all of his meetings, but he can't make it tonight. I guess he had a bad night last night, so he had some family issues to take care of tonight. I hope it had something to do with schools or whatever. Attorney Boboski's not going to be here tonight, and our traffic reviewer, Steve Finland, won't be here, but he's got somebody from the company representing.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is A.J. Alaves, I'm with the applicant. I'm here with my landscape architect, Brayden Drypoulter. On Zoom, we have Peter Freeman, our attorney, as well as Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer. So we, since the last hearing, we received a traffic peer review comment letter, which we're prepared to listen to the reviewer, if you'd like to present his comments. We are in the process of preparing our responses. We also spent the last month with our design team working hard on preparing full design-developed schematic drawings for the alternative conceptual site plan that we presented at the last hearing. And as we developed the design further and became more informed on the implications and benefits of the alternative conceptual site plan, we submitted a memorandum earlier this week that went through the details of some of those implications and benefits in a little bit more detail than we did at the previous hearing. So we're happy to go into that in more detail if you'd like tonight. We are also happy to listen to the traffic peer review engineer's comments, however you'd like to proceed. Thank you.
Well, you got the traffic peer review. Peer review.
Yes.
You got the other comments, if they wanted to review issue summaries?
Yes.
Did they, they want to speak to them?
If, if that's how you'd like to proceed. Yeah, sure. Jeff Dirk is our, our traffic engineer from Van Ness, and he's available to speak on that. Jeff.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the rec, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates were the transportation consultants for the project. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just walk through a brief presentation or just give a high level?
Yeah, just go through a brief, because we really haven't had anything yet. So do a brief presentation, and then you can probably go right to, there's a, there's a two-page, there's another, there's two things that we got from the peer review. You know, most of the stuff he agreed with, but he's got some concerns with the other stuff.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll share my screen, and I just have a few slides that will go through a summary of the transportation assessment.
We could do this in my office.
Do what?
No.
Sorry.
No, I mean with a big screen.
Oh, you got any presentation to put up on the big screen?
No.
No. It's all, if anybody read the traffic report, they'll find out that it's 457 pages, so anybody wants to read it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, are you able to see my screen?
No, go ahead. Yeah, we can see the screen. We can see the screen. How come, can we get it up there?
Yeah, it's a way to share it. Yeah, usually it's, can be duplicated across.
Let me know when you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I can start.
Okay, we're just trying to get it up on the big screen. We can see it on the TV screen.
No, that's, that's okay. I'll hold, Mr. Chairman, until you're ready.
That was here.
That's yours.
That's yours.
That was there. That was on the desk.
Don't ask me how to do it.
Oh, got something coming up.
We can, but then we wouldn't be able to follow along with what Jeff is doing, because whatever he does, it's not going to be.
If we can't get it up on the screen, can everybody see it in the top screens up here? Is that enough for people in council chambers?
I don't know if it's on that back screen. I would assume it is.
Can you see the, the shared screen that says Van Ness and Associates summary?
Is it up on that screen, Casey, on the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, well. We can take an, we can take a, we can take a recense if you need. All right, I'm sorry. Continue on.
Is it okay for me to start, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize. So I will, I've got some slides that just go through a summary of the transportation assessment. I do appreciate that your review consultant, Howard Steinhutzen, did provide comments to us earlier this week, so I have been able to work, I would say, the approach that we're going to take to responding to those comments. Always beneficial for us to see the review in advance, so we do appreciate that. And as I said, I, I've worked in kind of our approach to the responses, as A.J. had said, that we're currently working on and will be providing to the board. So just by way of a high-level overview of the transportation assessment, so we've undertaken a thorough evaluation of the transportation system serving the project site. What's important is that we do that in consultation with the town, so we work with the town planning department, as well as with the Department of Public Works and the town engineer, to make sure that we understood the existing conditions on the roadway, but also any planned future improvements. One of the things that your peer reviewer does as a part of their effort is make sure that the study was prepared in accordance with all accepted standards. Those standards, in the case of Massachusetts, are set by the Department of Trans, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and your reviewer has confirmed that the study does follow the applicable standards that the Department of Transportation sets. As I mentioned, it's a transportation assessment, so we're looking at not only motor vehicles, but also pedestrians, bicycles, and public transportation on the roadway network. And then, of course, most importantly is safety, and so we're evaluating safety with and without the project, and looking at historic motor vehicle crash history, lines of sight at the driveway, travel speeds along Route 140 in this case. Those are all incorporated into our assessment. The high-level findings, as we look at the impact of the project, and when we speak about impacts, what we're mentioning is our review of increases in motorist delay at intersection, and then that increased delay results in additional vehicles queued or backed up at the intersection. So we're looking at those conditions both before the project is constructed and then after the project is constructed. The finding as it relates to the project's impact on delays in queuing was that there was no significant impact shown to occur. What we measured in terms of impacts was that if you looked at the backups that happened at any intersection along Route 140 before and after the project's traffic, you would not see any more than four additional vehicles in front of you. That impact was mostly shown to occur with left-term movements at the signalized intersections and primarily on a Saturday. This is a corridor that everyone knows has a lot of retail-related traffic, and so evening peak hour and mostly on a Saturday is when we start to see the delays happening at the intersections. Overall, the intersections along the corridor were operating at what's called, known as a level of service of D or better, and so generally, the intersections overall operate with delays of, on average, of about 35 seconds or less before and after the project's traffic. The project has impacts, and so therefore, we do have a mitigation program or improvements that we're planning to advance, and those I'll discuss about at the end of my presentation. Exit, the driveway to the project site, when we looked at the delays for vehicles trying to exit the property with the driveways currently designed, the delays were, again, less than about 30 seconds, which is corresponds to a level of service of C or D. I should mention that levels of service, as we're looking at them, it's, it's letter grades, just like a report card, so it's A through F. A level of service of D or better is defined as acceptable traffic operation, so ideally, as traffic engineers, we want everything to be a D or better. As we're looking at the project again, the driveway operates at a D or better, C in the morning, D in the evening, and then Saturday. Vehicle queuing on the driveway was shown to be minimal, so again, the backups that happened as people are trying to leave the project site was about one vehicle, so no significant increases in delays or delay, or queuing, I should say, on the driveway. What's important about that is that if a fire truck is trying to get into the site, the queuing doesn't extend to a point where it would inhibit the ability of an emergency vehicle to be able to respond to the project. So that's the important thing, is we look at queuing, because if you're driving along Route 140 and there's a backup in the project, no one really cares unless you live in the project. But what's, what's important is that a first responder is able to get into the site if there's ba, if there's queuing, and the analysis has shown that, that an emergency vehicle or first responder is able to access the project site even during those peak traffic volume periods. Looking at motor vehicle crash history at the intersections along Route 140 and looking at the location where the project driveway is located, the motor vehicle crash rates at the intersection, so we look at the number of vehicles that are, the number of motor vehicle crashes that are happening in relation to the volume of traffic going through the intersections. All of the intersections along the Route 140 corridor and at where the project driveway is located, the number of crashes that are happening is not disproportionate to the volume of traffic. So what that means is there are crashes happening, but it doesn't rise to a significant level where it's disproportionate to what would be expected based on the volume of traffic on the roadway. Lastly, as it relates to safety, we did review the lines of sight at the driveways, so if you're coming up to Route 140, looking to the left or right, you do have more than adequate sightlines. It exceeds what state and federal criteria would suggest is needed for the driveway to operate in a safe manner. So in looking at that, both traffic operations, as well as safety and sightlines at the driveway, the conclusion that we've had, and your peer reviewers confirmed, is that the driveway is located and designed in a manner that it can function in a safe and efficient manner with the proposed development at the site, size and scale that is currently proposed. I, the last statement on here is the overall conclusion of your peer reviewer as it relates to everything I've just presented to you, because I think that's most important. You've heard me, heard me go on about all of this, but the important thing is that your reviewer has confirmed these findings, and this is what the reviewer has, has found, and she, she'll speak later on about this, but basically, all of the methodology, the findings that I just went through with you, your reviewers confirmed are adequate and present a true and reasonable prediction of the project's impacts on the roadway network, and I think importantly, we followed all accepted standards. So this slide just shows the context of the project site in relation to the Route 140 corridor, so the project is shown here in yellow. Here's Aspen Way. Our driveway will come out just about in this location here, so I'm showing that in relation to Aspen Way, just to show you that there's significant separation between those two intersections. This slide shows the study area that we evaluated in the impact assessment. It's essentially the Route 140 corridor stretching from the Chestnut Street and, including the Chestnut Street, King Street intersection, and then westerly, including the Horace Mann Plaza, the Central Square, Glen Meadow Road intersection, the Town Hall driveway intersection with the Big Y supermarket, and then the Aspen Way intersection to the west. This study area is established based on the amount of traffic that the project is expected to produce and the distribution of traffic, and I'll have a slide in a moment to show the distribution of traffic. The Department of Transportation as a baseline minimum says that as, when we conduct our transportation assessments, we should look at all intersections where the project will add 100 or more vehicles during the peak hour on the roadway, or where traffic volumes will increase by 5% or more. That is what these intersections encompass. The project itself is going to generate somewhere around 120 peak hour trips, and so that threshold of 100 or more vehicles during the peak hour of the day, you can see, if some of that 120 goes left and some of it goes right, the numbers start to drop off pretty quickly. But this area would be the locations where the project would increase traffic by 5% or more. Once you get outside of the boundaries, it doesn't mean obviously that there's not traffic from the project going there, but what it means is if we looked at the conditions before and after the project's traffic, you wouldn't show any change. And so this is the area where if there is to be an impact to the project, it is measurable and quantifiable in locations where we would look at doing, potentially looking, implementing improvements, and so that's how this was defined. So each of these intersections, we conducted traffic counts, so we understand the flow of traffic going through these intersections during each of the peak periods, so in the morning when people are going to work, in the evening when they're coming home, also when people are dropping off or picking up their children from school, and then on a Saturday when people might be shopping at these retail locations along this Route 140 corridor. So those are the time periods that we're looking at. We also look at volume and speed over a longer period, so we actually measure the speed and volume of traffic on 140. In this case, we measured it over 72 hours, so three consecutive days we collected data on Route 140, so that we can understand flow patterns over a longer duration, but also importantly, to look at the speed of traffic. The other thing I point out on this slide is where you see the orange lines, that's where there are sidewalks, because as I said, this is a transportation assessment, and so we look at all modes of transportation. So looking at walkability, we're showing where the sidewalks are. Where you see the blue lines, that's where there are crosswalks, and you can see it all the signalized intersections, there's crossings of Route 140. What is noticeable, and is certainly something that we focused in on, on the improvements associated with the project, is that as you look at the segment of sidewalk, basically beyond where the veterinary clinic is, you can see it's missing between there and where the project's site is. So, you know, filling that missing gap of sidewalk is what's been always a central, centerpiece of the improvement program as a part of the project. So this slide shows the amount of traffic that the project's going to be generating. And I should point out, that's in this column here. So we're proposed to have a 264-unit apartment community. From our standpoint in generating traffic, it consists of a mix of building heights, and so we have what we would call low-rise residential and mid-rise residential. So low-rise residential is a multifamily residential building that's three stories or less. The mid-rise is between four and 10 stories. So we have a mixture of low-rise and mid-rise, and so we've quantified the different traffic characteristics that are associated with those two different types of multifamily residential buildings, added them together, and that's, that's what you see here in column A. So this larger number at the top, the 1,410, that's the daily number over a 24-hour basis that we were predicting the project would generate, so it's half in, half out of that number. During the morning peak hour, so one hour in the morning, the peak hour in the morning on 140 in this area happens between 7:15 and 8:15 a.m., and we're expecting the project would generate 118 vehicle trips. During the evening peak hour, so the one-hour period in the morning, which in this case, I'm sorry, in the evening, in this case, it's, it's around 4:30 to 5:30. That's when the peak hour happens on Route 140. The project's expected to produce 127 vehicle trips. This 1,206, that's the Saturday number, so that's over the entire Saturday. The project would be expected to produce 1,206 vehicle trips, so you can see it's slightly lower than the, the amount of traffic produced on a typical weekday. During the Saturday midday peak hour, so this is one hour on a Saturday when the roadway has its peak. In the case of 140, that peak hour happens between 11:15 in the morning and 12:15 in the afternoon. So 11:15 to 12:15 is when the roadway peak, and this is the amount of traffic that we're expecting to add, which is 105 vehicle trips added to that roadway peak. In looking at these numbers, just to kind of put them in relation to the amount of traffic that is already out there today on 140, so Route 140 today accommodates about 11,100 vehicles per day, both on a weekday and on a Saturday, so it doesn't vary too much. During the peak hours, the roadway accommodates about 1,000 vehicles during each of the three peak hours that you have here, so these So these are the numbers that get added on top of what's out there today and top of those numbers there. What I'm showing in column B is the existing nursery on the project site, and this is the amount of traffic the nursery, when it's operating, generates this amount of traffic as we've estimated. And this last column is what we'd say, in comparison to the nursery, this is the net add of traffic on the roadway when the nursery is fully operational, obviously not when it's closed, but this is the net add. So you can see that net add over the existing nursery is close to about 100 vehicle trips on a weekday, less on a Saturday. What I want to be very clear about is we did not take credit for the nursery traffic in our traffic studies. So essentially, in the transportation assessment, we've assumed all of the traffic in column A gets added to Route 140. No credit is taken for anything in column B. So any traffic that's associated with the nursery, we just added our project's traffic on top of it. So it's slightly conservative in that we're predicting numbers or using numbers that are slightly higher than will actually be realized on the roadway network. But again, that's the prudent way to do it, just to make sure that we've got adequate capacity to accommodate the project. So I mentioned, as we were looking at the study area about the dispersal of trips, and that's what we show on the slide here. So as we've estimated the amount of traffic, the amount of traffic the project's going to generate here in column A, we have to add that traffic onto the roadway network, and that's what's shown on the slide here. The way that we developed this trip pattern, trip dispersal pattern, is we look at U.S. Census Journey to Work data. So in looking at residents of the town of Franklin, as you're reporting on the U.S. Census that you live in the town, you also report where you work, whether you work in Franklin or you work in an external community. So we can look at that information and say that these, the residents that live in this project, obviously will be residents of the town of Franklin. We're expecting that their places of employment will be pretty similar to what current residents have or employment centers. And so looking at, from this project site, how do you get to those employment centers? We arrive at this trip distribution pattern that you see here. We also refine it based on our existing traffic counts. Looking at the existing traffic counts lets us know how people are using the roadway network. So if for some reason you have congested conditions and people say, instead of making a left, I'll make a right, because that's the quickest way to get there, even though the mapping may say you want to go left and that's your quickest way, there are local influences that may affect which roads and which directions people may choose for their journeys. So we look at that as well. And putting those things together, we arrive at this trip dispersal pattern. So what you see on the slide here is about 65% of the traffic is oriented to and from the east, the west of the project site. 35% is oriented to and from the east. So as you're traveling toward Chestnut Street, King Street, that's 65% of the traffic. Once it arrives at that intersection, 10% would go north on Chestnut Street, 15% would go south on King Street, the majority, 40%, would then continue westerly on Route 140. So that's the way the trip dispersion works. So again, if we go back to say the project generates, let's say, 100 or 120 peak hour vehicle trips, we take that number, we disperse it on the roadway network as you see based on the pattern here, and what you're seeing is that that 120 vehicles get smaller and smaller as you get farther away from the site. And that's why as we're assessing the impacts of the project, it's not all 120 vehicles showing up at the King Street, Chestnut Street intersection, it's a smaller portion of that. So if we just use round numbers and said 100, 65 vehicles will show up at that intersection, making all of the various movements at that intersection. So we're not concentrating the traffic on any one movement. So that's why that dispersal results in smaller traffic volumes and reduced impacts at the intersections. And that's why as we're looking at conditions before and after the project, we didn't show that there was a significant impact in terms of increases in delays or vehicle queuing at specific intersections. And again, your consultant has reviewed those findings and has concurred with that. So after we've completed our analysis, we then have recommendations as they relate to both the project itself, the access, internal circulation, and then off-site improvements as well. So looking at the access and internal circulation, these are all things that have been incorporated into the site plan. So we want to make sure that as you're approaching Route 140, that the driveway has sufficient width to accommodate two-way traffic, any queuing that may happen on the driveway, and that it's sufficiently designed so that a fire truck can turn in and out of the project site without crossing the center line of either the driveway or Route 140. And so the first recommendation deals with making sure that we have proper geometry, and again, that's reflected in the site plan. Vehicles exiting the project site will be placed under stop sign control. I know there's been some question about whether a traffic signal would be needed at the driveway. There are state and federal criteria that have to be met to install a traffic signal. This project does not produce a significant or enough volume of traffic on a continuous basis to support the installation of a traffic signal. As I mentioned, during the peak traffic volume hour, we produced about 120 vehicle trips. About, let's say, in the morning, when most of the traffic would be exiting, you'd have about three-quarters of that traffic exiting. So again, the exiting volume is, you know, less than 100. In order to meet the warrants for a traffic signal, we would have to have approximately 100 vehicles exiting the driveway for a continuous eight-hour period over the course of the day. So it's a very high threshold that needs to be met. Residential projects generally alone will not meet that threshold. If you look down the street at the Central Square project that was built, even with the residential or commercial space in there, that intersection does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal. And that's a much more traffic-intensive or higher intensive use than what's being proposed here, and that location did not meet the warrants for traffic signal. So this location doesn't meet the warrants, so a stop sign will be installed. And then again, thinking back to our analysis of the driveway, even under stop sign control, there will be delays. People will be waiting to get out of the site, just as they are in any other unsignalized driveway or side street along 140. But the residual vehicle queuing associated with that is only one vehicle in the driveway. And the reason for that is residential traffic is generally dispersed, is not very concentrated, and so that's why the arrivals at the driveway, there are enough gaps on Route 140 for vehicles to be able to get out. You have to wait, but there are gaps in the traffic, so you are able to exit, and any residual vehicle queuing is minor. So the remaining recommendation is making sure that signs and pavement markings comply with accepted standards. Those are set by the manual and uniform, or established in the manual and uniform traffic control devices. I mentioned the sidewalks, so we will have sidewalks within the project site. Those sidewalks will then extend out to 140, and then a sidewalk segment will be constructed along the south side of Route 140 to complete that missing piece between the driveway and the existing sidewalk that ends just in the vicinity of where the veterinary clinic is to the, to the west of the project site. So that will be constructed as a part of the project, subject to mass DOT review and approval. We'll be providing wheelchair ramps for crossing the project site, driveway, and anywhere within the project sites. It will have full ADA compliance in the site up to 140, and then an ADA compliant sidewalk along that segment of 140. The last two recommendations deal with sightlines. As I mentioned, the sightlines far exceed what's required for safe operation of the driveway, based on an approach speed of 40 miles an hour, which is consistent with both the posted speeds and the end speeds that we actually measured on 140. So we exceed what's required for that 40 mile an hour approach speed. The important things here are, don't do anything to impede those sightlines, meaning no signs or landscaping placed within the site triangle areas, and making sure that when we have snow piles, we don't pile up the snow high enough that it would block the visibility. One of the things your review consultant has asked us to do is physically show those site triangles on the site plan, so we will be doing that. The importance of that is, when the board gets around to a final site plan for the project, you want those site triangles in the plan, so then your building inspector or your building chief zoning enforcement officer, they'll have that plan to the extent that they need to go out and verify that there's nothing in those site triangle areas, because it's going to be shown very clearly on that site plan. So that's something that your reviewer asked that we're currently working to prepare. Now in terms of the off-site recommendations associated with the project, so the Chestnut Street, King Street intersection, as you recall in that dispersal graphic, 65% of our traffic wants to go through that intersection. So as we looked at how that intersection operates within without the project's traffic, overall, the intersection operates at a D or better, meaning that overall intersection operates at acceptable conditions. We did identify however, and probably those who are very familiar with that intersection, that there are delays specifically for left-turn movements on the westbound approach on Route 140 that are operating, that movement happens to be operating at or over its design capacity. So in order to address that condition, what we've recommended is that an optimal traffic signal timing and phasing plan be developed for the intersection. So that's looking at how the intersection operates and then changing the traffic signal timing so that what we, what the goal really is, is to have no movement that's operating over its design capacity. We have shown that with that retiming, that that in fact will be the case, that you will not have a movement operating over its design capacity. So again, we've committed to implementing that improvement, subject to the requisite approvals that are needed there. So I think that's a DOT intersection, so we'd need their approval to make those changes. So we will be applying to the Department of Transportation to make the changes. The Route 140 corridor, as I mentioned, we have movements that are operating at D or better, meaning that the corridor itself operates well. However, there are locations along the corridor, especially left-turn movements going into some of the driveways, that are difficult and that do impede the flow of traffic along 140 during specific time periods. So there are some opportunities to look at some improvements along the corridor. Again, the project itself, in terms of impacts on those movements, it's not significantly impactful, but that doesn't mean that there's not a need for improvements. And so what we've done is we've committed to working with the town to provide a funding mechanism or to apply for a grant for either a masterworks grant or a housing works grant. What we typically would file on behalf of the town, and what we've offered to do, is file it's a one-stop grant application, which others may be familiar for, it was actually due today for interest, so we'd be filing for the next round of grant applications. Developing affordable housing at this location along the corridor does provide that opportunity because the state, of course, is interested in creating affordable housing. They will fund corridor-wide improvements that are to support affordable housing. And so this is a perfect opportunity to look at a longer-range improvement or a larger infrastructure improvement along the Route 140 corridor. And so we've committed to assisting the town with preparing that grant application. What's important when the grant application goes in is that you have a concept plan that's put together and that you are able to identify what the cost of that improvement would be. So we've committed to working with the town to prepare that corridor improvement plan at a conceptual level, to therefore develop the cost estimate, and then assisting the town with preparing that grant application. So we'd be able to assist that for the next funding round, which will hopefully either be in the fall or could be next year, but generally, it opens up in the fall as well. So in looking at these recommendations, the peer reviewer did request some additional information from us, specifically wanting to understand what the cost of these improvements would be. So we're working on doing that. As it relates to this corridor improvement plan, the peer reviewer's asked us to at least develop a concept plan to a level where we could estimate what that cost would be. So that's what we're going to be doing as well in terms of responding to this comment. We'll also give the board and members of the public an opportunity to look at what a concept may look like for some improvements along Route 140 corridor. So again, that's something that we're going to be working on. The other thing that was requested, it's not so much an off-site improvement, but it does deal with the project itself, is looking at what is the construction phase impacts associated with the build-out or construction of the project and developing recommendations to deal with reducing traffic demands during the construction phase of the project. So you'll also see that as a part of our response to the peer reviewer's comments. The last set of recommendations are what's known as transportation demand management measures. So we've estimated the amount of traffic that the project's going to produce, but the goal of these measures is to reduce the traffic and parking demands of the project. The town is served by services provided by the MBTA, so there's two commuter rail stations in the town. The Franklin Station being the closest to this project site. GATRA does provide public transportation services as well. They don't provide a bus service that would, that we would have our residents be able to access directly. I know that that's something that the town is working on with GATRA. However, GATRA does offer what's known as the GATRA GO service, which is a demand responsive service, so think of it as a Uber or Lyft type of service that GATRA operates, that you can use your cell phone and an app that they have to be able to request a ride. So there are opportunities to reduce traffic demands at the project site, but also regionally. And those would be making sure that residents are aware of the public transportation services that are available in the area. So again, the GATRA GO service, services offered by the Council on Aging, as well as the locations of where the MBTA commuter rail stations are located, Franklin Station again being the closest. So we have a transportation coordinator on site. It's generally going to be the, someone of the management team that will be on site that will manage this program. They will be working to make sure that residents have all of this information, also providing basically a web-based application where residents can request ride matching. So if they're interested in sharing ride with other residents, they'll be able to post that information and then be able to be linked up with other residents that may be traveling in the same areas or to the same employment centers that they may be going to. Providing a welcome packet to all residents, so this is a packet of information for all new residents, letting them know all of these available resources. Public transportation information being posted in the clubhouse area, so that it's centrally located. Pedestrian accommodations will be in the site, and I mentioned those improvements. So to the extent that it's a nice day like today, if you want to walk, you can walk down to the CVS, you can walk down to the Big Y. That's an important part of having ADA compliant sidewalks to be able to walk and get to those amenities that are just down the street from where the project site will be located. Within the site, we'll have a pickup and drop-off area for Amazon, FedEx, UPS. Generally, that's at the clubhouse. But in each of the buildings, it's also important that you have short-term parking, so that Uber, Lyft, DoorDash, they have a space that they can pull into near the front door and either pick up a passenger or drop off food or whatever that happens to be. That's a reality of multifamily communities. It's also an opportunity so that maybe you don't need two cars, and you can have one car and have an Uber or Lyft driver, things like that. It's things that do allow for some trip reduction to take place and reduce parking demands in a project. Telecommuting, of course, it's a fact of life today that we all kind of do, we're having a Zoom meeting, but making sure that people have an opportunity that you can actually get out of your apartment and go down to, say, a business office or have a meeting or conference room somewhere on the site, so that if you want to have an onsite meeting, you just have that ability of you can get out of your apartment and go have a business office or a meeting room to be able to collaborate or meet with people rather than having to go into the office. Central mailroom would be provided, and then importantly, is having bicycle parking within the project site, both exterior bicycle ramps as well as weather-protected bicycle parking within the building. So your peer reviewer has agreed with all of these and thinks that this is an important part of the project and should be a part of any conditions of approval that are put into the decision. They did ask specific things as they relate to these items, which is, it's great you're saying you're going to provide these things, but show us where they're going to be located within the project. So we will be doing that as a part of the site plan revision and showing where the specific parking for bicycles, as well as these short-term parking spaces, those will all be shown on the site plan. Another thing that was asked is electric vehicle charging. How many EV parking spaces will be provided and where would they be located within the project site? So that concludes my presentation. I will stop sharing now, Mr. Chairman. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to have the peer review in advance of the meeting. And as always with peer reviews, we think it will result in a better project. And if nothing else, you know, kicking the tires as it relates to the project, testing our assumptions and making sure that, you know, everything works as we've said it would be, I think is important, and your reviewer has done that, and we'll be responding to their comments. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you. Does Carrie on the call with us, Carrie Pike?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Did you listen to his whole presentation?
I did.
Did you find anything wrong with it or any glaring errors that he left out or anything?
No, I think he hit the highlights of our findings in the review. As he said, we agreed with the means and methods and the conclusions of the overall traffic study. I think most of our comments were really related to site design questions and getting more detail on a number of those things, the EV charging, service and trash for the clubhouse, and looking at how that's going to work, move in, move out, showing some auto turn to show how that activity will happen for the buildings, bike parking, and the pickup/drop-off zones, which spaces are going to be the EV charging spaces and how many. And then that site distance plan that Mr. Dirk mentioned, showing the actual plotting of the sightline, so that you make sure there's nothing in those, like the project's sign doesn't get put in those areas or snow removal at some point in the future, those kind of things. So I think he hit the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, and then construction period too. We always ask about that, just so you have an understanding of. too. We always ask about that just so you have an understanding of what the impact's going to be while the project's being built. How many, you know, how many workers, where are they parking? How many, you know, loads of different materials are going to be showing up onsite, say, on an average day? All those kinds of things, just so you can understand that while the project's being constructed. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have about the review.
Okay. I mean, your review was just of their work and you just concur with all the documentation that they presented, correct?
Yes, and I think I didn't mention, but the proposed improvements, like looking at the corridor study, you know, what exactly is being proposed and, you know, what might the costs be? Those kind, just kind of finding out what those details are. So you have a chance to look those over before you agree and make that a condition of approval, for example.
Well, it just so happens the closest thing we were at to discuss was traffic because they haven't got any other stuff done. So as far as I know, maybe the architect, maybe the landscape architect will have his stuff done. You got stormwater done yet?
We have, so we revised the plans.
I know a couple of times. You just revised them to that yesterday?
No, that was just a memo that was summarizing the design details of the alternative concept plan.
Yeah.
After we developed the design further over the last month, we discovered more, you know, implications of the design. So we wanted to just add that information to the board because at the last hearing, we didn't feel like we provided enough information. So we wanted to just give you guys that information in case it was helpful. We're going to prepare to submit the new plan set likely early next week. We're just finalizing a couple of things. We want to make sure that we revise the plans accordingly per the traffic peer review comments. We'll incorporate those before we submit. So we'll plan to do that next week.
Okay. You asked if you could just go, you're in contract now, right?
Yes, sir.
I expect you're going to be there by July.
Yes, we're, our next hearing is Thursday of next week, and their peer review team will be reviewing the new plan set. They've been reviewing some other aspects of the project, but they don't have the revised plans. So they were on hold until we submitted those. So once those are submitted next week, they'll start their review.
So they haven't even said anything yet?
They've been looking at the project and attending hearings, but they haven't.
We've been looking at it too.
They haven't reviewed the revised plans yet because they weren't submitted yet.
But anyway, you got somebody else with you. What did they want to say?
This is our land.
Before we do that, any questions from the board about the traffic study?
Okay. All right. Thank you for the detailed overview. I was wondering if Jeffrey and then Carrie can comment on the no-build condition part of the traffic analysis and just the historic growth that's happened along this corridor and if you see that as significant growth and how this may layer on top of that. Because just as a resident, it feels like there has been a fast growth along this corridor.
So the has been, I think that it's been really as a result of development. There's been a significant amount of development that's taken place along the corridor, you know, with the Central Square project being probably the more significant that's taken place. But there's been other smaller residential projects and commercial space that's also been developed. So that has all been incorporated into the transportation assessment. Fortunately, we, our office has mostly been the author of those studies, so we're very familiar with the flow of traffic along the corridor and the growth that you've mentioned. So we did incorporate that into the study. What we've found, if we looked at the traffic volumes pre-COVID and where we are now, I think that the traffic patterns certainly have changed a little bit. I would say to you that when we were doing the traffic work for Central Square, we were showing like at the Chestnut Street intersection that there were so many movements over there up at that intersection that were at or over capacity. At least the dynamic of traffic has changed to the extent that there has been growth, there has been development, but there also has been some improvements that have been taking place. I know there have been improvements made at that intersection, mostly to deal with the fact that it was a high-crash location. It doesn't continue to be so. So there has been some improvement in terms of both traffic operations and safety enhancements at that intersection. So I think it's a, there has been growth, there's been significant development that's taking place. There's also been improvements that have gone along with those development projects. And as we've looked at that growth and what we expect will continue into the future for growth along the corridor there, we consider that in our analysis. And again, if we look at those conditions before and after the project's traffic, we're still showing acceptable operating conditions, but we are acknowledging that there are movements that are operating at or over capacity. Therefore, there will be the need for improvements. And that's why we've identified those as a part of our study. So I'd like Carrie to layer on to that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have that much more to add. I do agree that the traffic conditions have changed a little bit since we've gotten through the pandemic with, you know, you do have more people working from home on a certain number of days. That may be a lot of, I think in some cases now, you know, in the present condition, more on, maybe on Mondays and Fridays. I know for myself, I go to an office on Monday because my, one of my teams that I, reports to me is, and I find the traffic less on my drive than on a Monday than if I have to go on Tuesday through Thursday. But certainly, you know, there has been, it seems a lot of growth, but I do think that's incorporated in the results in the traffic study. And as Mr. Dirk mentioned, you know, they are proposing some tweaks to deal with things. And it seems that there have been, the improvements that have been made in the past have helped, you know, have taken that where there may have been issues and helped deal with them.
The report notes a 1% per year growth rate from, if I'm reading this correctly, from 2009 to 2019. Is that high?
The actual historic growth is less than 1%. It's closer to about a half a percent. I would also just, to the extent that it's helpful, the regional traffic model for this area predicts growth rates of about a quarter of a percent or less. So the 1% would be high based on those trends, but also I think we're looking at a seven-year planning horizon. Those regional models are like 30-year models. And so if you look at it over 30 years, the low growth rate makes sense because it's not going to grow 1% per year for 30 years. But when we're looking at a smaller window, the 1% growth is reasonable for over a seven-year period.
Yeah, that's pretty typical for this type of, kind of a small suburban-ish area. I mean, in areas like, say, in downtown Boston where a lot of stuff is already built up, that's where sometimes we don't even use a growth rate at all because every inch of land that can be occupied is occupied. It might change uses, but it generally doesn't change enough that we use a 1% growth rate. But for this type of area, I think that makes sense. And it, I think as Mr. Dirk said, you know, it accounts for that seven years, kind of things that are unknown.
Okay.
Whereas you did already have a lot going on in the past few years.
So this, it looks at the 2009 to 2019 period and then today, but we don't really have the growth rate from 2019 to now mapped out, do we? Maybe from other developments?
So we do, we do from other accounts that have been done in the area and we try to incorporate those as well. One of the things to be careful about is that the, we've been trying to exclude like the COVID period just because if we factor in that, you get that drop and we'd be showing like negative growth. So I think as planners, we've been very careful in how we handle what's happened since COVID because I think as Carrie was mentioning, you know, even the work from home, you know, I think everyone's seen, there's also this reversing trend. Because I think when you look at the census data, it was showing something like if you look at the closer to COVID or just after COVID, of course, the work from home numbers were like 26% of people were working from home. And that dynamic is now, when you look at the more recent data, it's changing and it's kind of flipping back to, not back to pre-COVID, but it's certainly not at the levels we were back a year or two. There's a trend of being more, more in the office. And so that's why we're very careful about what we choose for like 2019 to now, looking at what's happening, because you'll see a significant dip that happens in those numbers and it starts to skew the results.
Okay, I understand. Related to the improvements that were made at the intersections, the mitigation that's proposed is to optimize the timing at the light. Hasn't this been proposed at every other development along here recently? And was this light already optimized? Like what else would we be doing to this light?
Yeah, I think the important thing about, so it's still the optimization because what we're trying to do is, again, that's, it's not a high-crash location, but what we are trying to do is, at a bare, at a baseline level, is to, we call it cause no harm. So basically, what you have there today will be there in the future when the project is constructed. So the goal is at a baseline level is not to make things any worse. What we are showing is that with the project and the re-timing, we can actually make things better. Now, the re-timing, yeah, it sounds like it's a very easy thing. It's certainly much easier than going out and rebuilding an intersection or adding turn lanes or doing things like that. But what needs to happen is, as you talked, we talked about the incremental development that's happening along the corridor. Well, that changes traffic volumes and also changes traffic patterns. And so you need to change the timing or review the timing of the traffic signal to make sure it reflects the changes in volume and patterns at the intersection so that, as I talked about, some movements are operating over capacity, but other movements have plenty of capacity. And so the goal of the re-timing is to take movements that are operating with little delay, increase the delay on those movements, not to make them operate at less than a degree, but then take that time and move it to a movement that's operating over capacity with the goal of that really trying to achieve an intersection that operates with no movement over capacity. And so the re-timing allows for that to take place. And generally, signals shouldn't be re-timed every year, but we know that there's not money to be able to do that. And so when development projects take place, that's the opportunity for the state and for the towns to make sure that the signals are looked at and upgraded or improved as needed. And so we've offered to do that.
Okay. There isn't a recommendation to, I think I saw it somewhere in the report, about a question about adding turning lanes to that, that main 140 Chestnut King intersection? And you're basically saying there is no recommendation to do that for an eminent domain to add a turning lane?
Correct. We are not recommending that turning lanes be added. And certainly, the addition of turn lanes is not required to accommodate, the addition of additional turn lanes is not required to accommodate this project.
Okay. I'll just note that in the town's master plan that was adopted, we, the town flagged this intersection to be studied in more detail, just holistically, not related to any single development. Is that something that maybe the project could help with?
So I'll speak before AJ cuts me off. We did commit to preparing that corridor improvement study. That would include that intersection. And what your review consultant has asked us to do is, is a part of this, kind of their review of the project, is present that, at a conceptual level, what the improvements may look like on the corridor, and I would suspect it would include that intersection, so that then the board would be able to look at that. So we're going to give kind of a first pass at that so that we can quantify what the cost estimates may be. But our commitment really is to make sure that the study you just mentioned, yes, we agree that that's something we would undertake with the goal of it being able to, you know, as the master plan had said, put together a plan with a cost estimate and then the grant application to implement that plan. And that's what we've committed to do as a part of the project. So we'll be advancing, I think, what's in the master plan. And the creation of affordable housing at this site is what we're suggesting is one of the potential opportunities to unlocking the funding to actually build that work.
Okay, thank you. So clarification on the corridor improvement study. So the grant is to implement the improvements or to study what needs to happen?
It's to construct it. Our goal is to provide you what you need so that you would be asking for design and construction dollars, but that the improvements have been studied and the town's comfortable with them. So to be clear, it's not, it's not us preparing a plan, your review consultant saying, oh, that looks good. It's the town accepts that as well, with your review consultant saying, we think this is a reasonable approach. And then the town, even beyond this project, because it's a commitment of mitigation as a part of the project, is that planning, engineering, DPW, review that plan and agree that that's something that's in the town's best interest, that the town would like to see advanced, and then the grant is applied for.
Do these grants require a match from the town?
They, it depends on, they do not require a match from the town. So the town can ask for, you can ask for design dollars and you can also ask for design and construction dollars. So depending on what the value of the work is, like if it, you know, these grants can be less, they're generally less than, let's say, $5 million, let's say. So if you go in and ask as a part of the grant for design and construction dollars and the total value of it, say, is less than $5 million, that's typically the awards that are granted for this type of projects. We applied, we applied today for, I think it was $4.5 million for major corridor upgrade in the city of Amesbury. It's along the same type of thing that we're talking about here with a major reconstruction of an intersection plus some corridor-wide improvements. And so they're asking for construction dollars. They already have money for design, but so that, this is in line with the type of requests that are a part of those grants.
Okay. I have a question about the recommendation that stop sign only on coming out of the project is sufficient. Just knowing that any single time I've tried to turn left out of any property along that stretch at peak hours, it's near impossible. So I just turn right or I cut through some other adjacent property to get to the traffic light. I think that needs a closer look. And I just feel that having a stop sign there in peak hours with 1,000 cars coming, turning left out of there will have more than one car backup. So worried about backups in the driveway.
So just, I don't disagree with you that it's difficult to get out of that area in terms of especially making a left-hand turn. As I mentioned, we cannot install a traffic signal, so there's just, it's not even a possibility. The options as it relates to looking at when you don't meet the criteria for a signal is sort of like what you said. You could restrict turning movements, but it's not really practical, especially for a project. And there's nothing at this location that would suggest that that's something that's needed. The other thing you look at is should the driveway be two lanes? Because as you said, if it's difficult to make the turn, you know, do you put a separate left-turn lane and a right-turn lane? Again, what we're showing in terms of our analysis and your review consultant has looked at it, is that there is sufficient gaps in traffic in this area because the volumes are different as you get, let's say, west of or east of the Big Y supermarket, the volumes start to drop off a little bit. And when I was mentioning 1,000 vehicles roughly, it's not all going in, that's two-way traffic. So you've got a prevailing traffic flow in, let's say, where you might have 600 vehicles going in one direction and 400 going in the other direction over the course of the hour. It is a lower-volume section of roadway than if you get closer to Central Square, the town hall area, where there's much more activity. So this is a, this is an area with lower activity, but I completely agree with you. It'll be difficult to make a left-hand turn during the peak hours. But again, what we're showing in terms of our analysis is there is enough gaps in traffic at this location to allow for those left turns to exit the project and will not have significant queuing. But even if there's three vehicles in the driveway, I think the important thing is if you're driving along 140, you're not being delayed as a result of project traffic. The queuing would happen within our sites or it's our residents that will be delayed. But even if we had three vehicles, the important thing is you have to wait, but a fire truck and ambulance or a truck, an ambulance, or a police car is not inhibited from being able, able to enter the site. I think that's, that's the important, it's not unsafe. You just will be delayed exiting.
Can I ask about the EV charging or is there, because that was a recent peer review, there really isn't thought about where EV chargers would go yet?
We haven't located the EV charging stations just yet, but we're in the process of doing that and that'll be incorporated into their revised plans being submitted next week.
Okay. Are you thinking about them all exterior? All outdoors or any in the garages?
I haven't given that thought yet. We'll have to look into it.
Okay.
It'll be incorporated in the plans.
I would say not in the garages because of the fire risk.
Sure.
And would any EV chargers be available for public use?
No, not other than visitors who are coming to the site, no, they won't be available for public use because it's a private apartment community.
Could they be even if there is a limited time?
It just, it's, it's a private community, so it's, it's, it's impossible for us to secure access with, with people coming onto the property for our management team. So unfortunately, no, it's just going to be an amenity that's available for our tenants.
That was everything I had.
Mr. Dirk, just a quick question before I go to answer, before I forget, before it floats out of my head. The intersection at Chestnut and East Central Street, King Street, is in a state highway, even though it's located on Route 140. The state highway ends by where the erect sets are going up down on Lewis Street. So, you know, from, from there down, it's, and through town until you get all the way down on the other side of town. Well, not all the way down, but before, I think it's around Hayward Street, that's when the state highway begins again. So how do those grants work with that if you're looking for a grant from the state?
Right. And you know what, what I also say is the state is more, the state generally, you know, I'll, I'll say the state generally don't like to pay themselves for making improvements. So, so the fact that, the fact that the grant goes through the town to be used on a town roadway, I think is also very important and an important point as we look at that grant application. It doesn't mean that that money can't be used on a state highway, but it's generally, the state wants the money to be used for local roadways rather than paying themselves to make improvements on their, on state roads.
Okay. My understanding also is they're talking about a roast about around, whatever you go, circle that, roundabout, yeah, roast about, yeah. That's what it'll become, a roast about. And there's going to be some land takings involved and eminent domain takings and everything else if they go that route. But anyway, I'll ask you, any questions?
I do have some questions. Mr. Dirk, you've mentioned that you cannot install a traffic light at this location. Can you clarify that, why?
Sure. So the, in order to install a traffic signal at a, at an intersection on a local road or a state road, there are criteria, they're known as warrants, that have to be met and they're published by the Federal Highway Administration. There are nine warrants for the installation of a traffic signal. You have to meet at least one of the nine warrants in order to install a traffic signal. Massachusetts or the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So you have to accept the federal highway standards as design minimums, but you can, you can alter those and have your own criteria that can be more stringent, but they can't be any less stringent than the federal standards. The Department of Transportation has said that of those nine warrants, they want you to meet the most stringent warrant, which is warrant one, which is that continuous volume of traffic warrant that I mentioned. And so the continuous volume of traffic warrant says that for each of any eight hours of an average weekday, and I use this example of for the project driveway, just as a rough number, the project would have to produce, just, just exiting volume, would have to produce 100 vehicles per hour for each of any eight hours on a weekday. The project will not produce that volume of traffic. As I mentioned, during the peak one hour, the total volume of traffic entering and exiting is 120 vehicles. The amount of exiting traffic during the peak hour in the morning, which is when most of the traffic is exiting, is less than 100. It's probably closer to about 60 vehicles exiting or 75 vehicles. So there is, there is no case where this project will produce 100 vehicles per hour over a continuous eight-hour period on a weekday. So with that being the case, and I think as the chairman correctly corrected me, this portion of the, it doesn't really make that much difference, but this portion of 140 is a state highway. Mass DOT will not in any condition approve the installation of a traffic signal at, for this driveway. It just does not even come close to meeting their criteria. So it can't be installed because it doesn't meet the warrants, the state would not improve it, approve it. And I would also just go further to say you will not find a licensed professional engineer that will design a traffic signal at this intersection because it doesn't meet the criteria. So even if you were to say, we want a signal and we're going to condition it, you will not find a design professional that will design it for you because it has to meet those criteria and it does not.
Just a good example is they, they wouldn't give one across the street either.
That's what we, your question was, when you put in, right, the first one was happening.
Over here? No, they never, they don't put one in.
Can I ask a quick follow-up? Is this a new, is this a new criteria? Because there's, there's a lot of traffic signals that are based on a sensor when there isn't that level of traffic flow.
It's, it's not a new cri, the only thing that, the only thing that's changed over, and Carrie can correct me, over maybe it's 25, 30 years, there's, there used to be eight warrants and now there's a ninth warrant that got added to it. But the criteria that I've mentioned, especially the traffic volume warrant criteria, that has not changed. It's always been the same. Now, it's not to say that there are not traffic signals that have been installed that shouldn't be there. But what I would say is if, if they're installed and they don't meet the warrants, they generally will get removed. There's probably a lot of locations where people have driven through and have said, I don't understand why there's a traffic signal here. Or you end up on one of the side streets and you're sitting there waiting and the light is red forever and there's like no traffic coming. I mean, there are those instances where we've all seen where there just should not be a traffic signal. But the, the idea of these warrants has been, that's been around for a long time.
Yeah, a long time. And also, you know, it is true, sometimes things change, right? There might have been a traffic signal for some use that was very intense, that went away, that changed into something less intense. And I haven't seen many removed, but they'll put them on flash, right? So you'll, you'll go through it and it's just flashing yellow on the main road and flashing red on the side street and, or they'll, they'll turn them off and bag the heads because it, it isn't needed anymore. So things like that happen where, you know, the situation's changed and what, where it used to meet the warrants, it doesn't anymore. But yeah, it's been, since I've been practicing, which is a long time, and I don't want to talk about how many years.
So I have another question about a turning lane. And I'm wondering if it makes sense or if one should be installed going westbound, turning left into the, into the area?
So not related, so westbound to go into the site. So we have, as I, I think if you looked at that distribution map that we have, that we have 35% of our traffic traveling westbound. And so that's a, it's, it's a relatively small number of vehicles over the course of the hour. So we didn't show in terms of our analysis, again, it's difficult to get out of these driveways, but it's not as difficult to get into the driveways. And so our analysis is saying that, that there are enough gaps in traffic so that you can make the left turn going in, because again, most of our traffic, 65% is to, to the west, so that would be a right turn entering. Of the smaller number of trips would, is to and from the, the east, which would be the left turn entering. So we didn't show that the left turns going into the site backed up the traffic on 140 to the extent that you would need a turn lane.
I kind of disagree with that, but I, I have more questions.
Okay. Everybody's been sitting patiently tonight, so I think I'll open it up to the audience. Same criteria, three minutes, questions, comments, answers. And if you're not a traffic person, engineer, I don't know what you're going to be able to tell us that we don't already know. I, I came out of Big Y on Monday afternoon and had to wait, couldn't even get out of the light. I think I had to wait for the light to turn on before I could take a left-hand turn out of there. So that was, went Monday afternoon at 3:00 P.M., so that's not one of the high-peak times of day. But anyway, I see you all getting all wound up over there, Gene. You want to speak?
Sure. I'll open it up.
Thank you, Bruce. Gene Grella, 36, Red Gate Lane. First question is about these studies, I don't, obviously new to this process. So is this the only study that we do or are there, is there a, a second study? Is the study independent or do we have a, is the, does the town do their own study?
They do a study. We hire somebody to review their work to make sure. We're not going out and making a whole new study. We're just reviewing their work to make sure it complies with what they said.
Okay.
And I can tell you another thing. I've been doing this a long time and I've never seen a traffic study deny a project. You know, it's just, they try to do some mitigation somewhere. They've been talking about mitigating the lights down there like Janelle asked. The project across the street, the Taj, they hit them up for 10,000. And then the other erect set down there, they hit them up for another 5,000. So there was 15,000. I haven't seen the lights change.
If it's not independent, how do we know, like, the whole thing comes down to counting cars, right? How do we know that the cars that they counted are the actual right numbers? I saw the dates, it was sometime between, you know, December 4th and 7th.
Mr. Dirk, did you do a count with a line across the road, an airline? Or are you just using the state count? I can't hear.
You're on mute, Jeff.
You're muted, I think.
Yeah, I won't lose the, use the cliche that I should have known, but, so, so we did do traffic counts. And if you look in the, and I, I know the chairman had mentioned this huge 500-page traffic study, but most of those pages are traffic counts, I guess is probably the best way to say it. So it's a small traffic study.
Yeah.
A lot of it's the traffic count. So we went out and did our own traffic counts. We do look at the state data to validate, you know, seasonality, things like that, but these are all our own traffic counts that your peer review consultant also reviews.
Okay. And the second question is around loss of, level of service D. So can you describe how you, how a level of service D is defined and it's probably a range, so how close is level of service D to level of service E, which is one is acceptable, one is not acceptable?
Right. So it's, so you, the range roughly is, so a level of service of D has a range, as you said, of delay, somewhere between like 30 seconds and 50 seconds of delay at an, at an unsignalized intersection. So that's, that's the range. So if you're anywhere between 30 and 50 seconds, let's say, that's a D. If you go above that, either 50 or 60 seconds, you're, you get to an E and an E is at capacity. So if we have a movement that's at capacity, that means if you add a few more cars, it's going to go over capacity. So you, you want to be under capacity, which is a D or better. And that's, so that's where that acceptable traffic operations are. All of the intersections are, I would say, operating with delays that are, they're certainly less than 50 seconds. We have some intersections that might be in the 45-second range. The Chestnut Street intersection is getting close to that upper limit of the D, but that's where we're re-timing the traffic signal so we get away from upper limit. And that's what we're trying to do, is get ourselves away from the 45 seconds on average to, and get ourselves closer to, you know, the 30, 40 seconds. So somewhere where there's additional capacity for, I think as some of the members had mentioned, added growth, added development, that we're not going to a condition where we add the project's traffic, we mitigate, oh, we're just at that capacity bubble. And then if the town approves another project, we're over that capacity. We're trying to get to a condition where we have excess capacity.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Gary Love, 39, Red Gate Lane. You're right, I'm not going to tell you anything new and I'm not a traffic person. I just hope we take into account, you know, the, the study seems to say everything's fine, yet we all know the reality is it's not fine. I really don't hear, and, and it's nobody's fault, there's any real practical thing to do to change it, certainly not in the near future. That's just the way it is. So I'm back to the potential solution is not to exacerbate the problem and put so many apartments with so many cars into this particular development. That, that's it. I don't think much is going to happen with the road. And I will say, coming from the east in is oftentimes where I've seen, I've sat and sat and sat, you know, to the east entrance to our town is really what gets backed up. And we've said before, we don't want to be like a Milford or a Framingham, but it really gets backed up going east, not just coming from the west. So that's all I have to say.
But I think you'd have to agree, there's probably more than 50% are out-of-town traffic.
It, it may be out of town, but these cars are going, that, if, if we hope they don't come, I guess, that's great, but that doesn't sound good for the town either. So it's just traffic. It's a reality. We all know, I'm not saying anything new. The study's great, I'm not going to challenge the study. I'm just looking at the reality. We're all sitting there, we see it every day. And that seems to be the solution, is don't put so much traffic back into that, that road.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else?
Hi, Leslie Burgos from One Burning Tree Road. I just wanted to let you all know that I vehemently hate this project. The traffic is ridiculous and the traffic continues to go on Jordan Road because people don't want to go down 140. Everybody from Cook's Farm is coming through this way. People coming from Rentham are now going down Jordan Road to go around to get to Shaw's. It's, it's, it's ridiculous for us. We can't even get out sometimes onto Route 140. We have to go the other way. That's how bad it is. And for everybody who lives in Cook Farm, Cook's Farm, I did go and walk your neighborhood and, and I hope this doesn't happen to you because it, it's, it's not good. I, I don't even know how you're going to live there with people peering down into your backyards. And I was the one who dropped those flyers off to try and get more people here because it's too much on this end of town. There's way too many apartments on this end of town. We can't handle this capacity. I'm going the other way now to go to Stop &amp; Shop in Plainville because I don't want, I, I live a mile away from Shaw's and I can't go down Route 140. So I think when you're looking at the traffic study, one of the things people have to take into consideration is the traffic pattern is already changing. It's going down Jordan Road and coming back up Chestnut. It's, it's, this is, you know, we really need to stop and think about what's happening to the residents in Cook's Farm. And, and you know, I feel so bad for them and what they, what's going to happen. And we're just going to keep expanding, expanding. And, you know, I just think our resources are strained and I just, I am vehemently against this project and I hope that everybody stops and takes a, a look at what's happening on 140 and just keeps letting you know, excuse me, how, how we feel. And I hope that this thing doesn't go through. Thank you.
Steve Huston, 10 Wampanoag Drive. If I remember back from school, if I brought a D home, I would have a bad day. So, but other than that, we're back to the, the basics of the zoning board is to apply the zoning rules and anything that needs 30-plus changes to the rules with a lot of people who keep showing up opposed, this should be a total no-brainer to just close down. I don't know why it's still here.
That's the process.
Hi, Maureen Chobakin from 10 Burning Tree. And I concur with Leslie at 1 Burning Tree. And I'm really surprised that the study did not go as far as Jordan Road. I don't, don't understand why that wouldn't have, because clearly that's a major road that can cut through. So it would be interesting to see what they think the impact will be because people aren't going to want to wait. They're just going to go off and go down Jordan Road. And I'm against it.
Anyone else? No?
Anyone else? No?
Brian Bosley at 185 Grove Street. So there's three things I wanted to top touch on. So Taj 2 is under construction. You call it the erector set there. Did this study take into account the extra traffic from Taj 2, once that opens up and people start moving in there?
Mr. Dirk?
We did. And then it's like, we did. And as I mentioned, we were, we were the traffic engineers for Taj 2. So we, we have all of the numbers and estimates for that.
Taj 2, right?
It's listed as Taj 2.
Taj 2?
Yeah.
And the, the scope of this assessment didn't really take into account, once you get on to King Street going down towards 495, because that, that stretch in between 140 and 495 really gets backed up. Like, I live on Grove Street and coming up and back there, it, it's, it's an eight-minute drive to get to like the Big Y. But these days, it's taken me, it took me over 20 minutes to get back the other day. And that's before we have the additional traffic from this, this development coming to 495. So the scope of the traffic study isn't, there, there's a lot that wasn't really taken into consideration that impacts the rest of the town. And then they also talked about Franklin Station and access to Franklin Station. I assume they're talking about Dean College Station. So the, the parking there is already under, undersufficient for the number of people who you, who need to use that or want to use that station. And adding additional people trying to get onto 140 into that, into that station in the morning, like everybody here has said, like trying to make a left-hand turn onto 140 is a complete nightmare. Like anywhere coming out of Summer Street, the lights there, like I've, I've sat three or four light cycles on Summer Street trying to turn, or on Cottage Street trying to turn onto 140. And I was late for my daughter's softball game just the other day because that traffic is already there. So the, the, the level of traffic that we've got on 140 already trying to turn on even where we do have lights is already pretty excessive. So adding another 240 people at the end there who are all going to be coming down into town, I don't necessarily agree that that's only going to add like one or two cars like, like this, like the, the, the study said. So that's all.
Thank you.
Barbara Steele, Nine Mountain Hash Road. Two things. First of all, I live at Chestnut Bridge. And like the women from Burning Tree, thank you, have said, people take shortcuts. Instead of going all the way around, they drive through Chestnut Bridge. And even though there are signs that say private driveways and so forth, people still do it. The second thing is, we just had an override that didn't pass. It's going to impact all of the services within town. Fire Department, Police Department, schools. Generally speaking, when people move into an apartment, they bring their children with them. Have we talked about or thought about the impact that it's going to cause, take on the schools? Excuse me, I'm very nervous.
We, we just can't consider any of that.
You can't consider it. However, it does impact the community significantly. That's all I have to say.
All right, AJ, you got your landscape guy here?
I brought Raiden just in case there are questions on the letter we submitted regarding the, the changes to the east side. However, we'll plan to resubmit new plans next week, incorporate the peer review comments from the traffic peer review letter, and submit a response to that. But that's okay with you.
Okay. Now, what are you going to do? You're going to have the Concom do your storm water?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the plan.
Okay. You got that memo that I, Casey sent you.
I did. Yep.
There's no sense duplicating the effort.
Yes, sir.
I think they're after it more than we are, so. But anyway, with that being said, any other, anybody else got a question or anything?
Can I ask about the revised plans in a minute?
Yeah.
Are you planning to provide sections, both of the original plan and the revised plan with peaked roof and flat?
Yes, we'll do two options, one with flat, one with peaked. Yep.
For both the original and the new?
I was thinking for the revised set we're submitting.
Okay. So is the, is the, the plan with the five buildings, the, the two, three-story buildings, is that completely off the table?
No, it's, this is just, we haven't actually submitted the alternative yet, but we are planning to next week. So we'll submit the alternative and
You didn't bring any copies of that, would you? Did you?
Sorry?
You didn't bring any copies of that picture?
No, I didn't.
I mean, we've, we got them last time.
No, no, we just got some two days ago, I think.
And that's the same.
Show four buildings?
It's the same.
Yeah, but they're, they're taking a peek off one of them and making it a flat roof.
Yeah, but there's no sections.
No, there's not much, just a
That's just a conceptual site plan that we have been developing into a fully designed set of plans that's sufficient enough to submit for comprehensive permits.
Hey, excuse me, people?
So once those plans are finalized, which they will be early next week, we'll submit all the details that reflect that revised conceptual site plan.
Okay.
Including the sections.
Okay. I think the sections will be helpful for people to see because of the 20-foot grade change.
Sure.
So that'll be important. And I would like to see it with the, if there's a section cut through the original five-building plan, just to see the difference of the three-story and the four-story.
Okay. Got it. Okay. When do you think you're going to be ready again?
We'll be ready the next, the next available hearing and however, whenever the schedule is.
I mean, we've got July 17th, but I mean, you know, you're just going to come in and show the concept plan?
No, we're, we're ready to submit the new plans. And we should have some good feedback from your other peer reviewer by then.
Well, we're not, we're not, I told him not to bother him.
Okay, he's not going to review any of the
He's going to review whatever you submit to
Okay, got it.
Conservation Commission.
Right.
Unless you want to pay him to do it, I'll, I'll
No, I think, I think the next hearing on, is the next hearing the 17th?
Well, the 17th or we can go out later. I know that you've got problems with the Concom because they're not, you know, they're not full staff right now. So I don't know how things are going to work out.
So the next hearing is the 17th of July, correct?
For here, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with us.
Okay. Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this until July 17th at?
7:45.
7:45 PM.
So moved?
Motion made and seconded. Any, any discussion? Hope you're going to be ready to, to continue.
Thank you.
Anyway, with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Seconded. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. Good night, everybody.